Next up, we were asked by neighbors in the Aberdeen Road neighborhood to come to us to talk about some construction that is underway on Aberdeen Road. Are the neighbors here?
Yes.
Mr. Ward, can you go to the seat? So, the issue is, as I understand it, quite a bit of site disruption going on in connection with a replacement house that's being constructed on Aberdeen Road. I think the house is one of the 5,995 square foot, just under the radar houses. And from what I understand, they've been hammering the ledge now for quite a while to cut down the top of the hill. So that's the background. What would you like to discuss with us?
Okay, thank you. First of all, thanks for having us time to do this. Our request to meet with you is a result of a suggestion by your former planner. My first, your name just to start.
My name is Terry Highline. I'm a resident of one Aberdeen Road in Weston. Your former planner suggested that we approach the planning board about the conditions that we were experiencing and observing since the end of January at 14 Aberdeen. Let me say that I personally am not here to curtail or modify the construction of 14 Aberdeen, which is well underway and for which a permit has been received. I believe our purpose as neighbors is to bring to your attention the conditions that we have both observed and experienced in the past 10 or 11 weeks that suggest the discussion and possibly an introduction of a bylaw that would prevent this kind of what we see as extreme modification to the natural environment. I attended the three previous hearings tonight and heard often the comments regarding rural character of Weston. And this related to that construction is the means by which the construction is taking place, which is clearly, according to the definition of prohibitive use, is an objectionable feature to the neighborhood. People who work at night are sleep deprived. People who work in their offices during the day cannot conduct business. People who have children and grandchildren cannot entertain them. It's disruptive to simply to, and disturbance of pets. It's an issue which really needs to be addressed. And according to the existing bylaws, there's nothing to prevent it. So we're here with a number of neighbors. I want to defer to a number of comments. I don't know if all of you, have you observed what's going on there?
Yeah, I went over there a couple of days ago.
Okay, we have some photographs of what's going on there.
This isn't quite the before and afters.
That you might want to see. You might want to take a look at.
So I'm going to hit slideshow and you can just pass it on? Oh, actually, just slide. There's only six pictures there, just three of four, three out of four. Oh, current, let's work that one. I'll play some background music for you while we're waiting. This is inside my house.
Looks like a building.
Mr. Alpide is three lots and one road away from the site.
I'm across Merring Street, about 150, 200 feet back from the road. This is even my house.
I'm having flashbacks of another hill that was cut down in another part of town a few years ago.
So this doesn't sound very loud, but I guarantee you, in the house, it's as loud as I'm talking.
Uh huh.
Okay? This is up my front door, which you'll be able to hear a little bit better. Whoops. This is up my front door. That's my door. That's opening my front door.
He's three lots and one road away from the site. I'm across the street.
I'm across the street, yeah.
Mr. Ward is a butter.
Every morning.
Ms. Martyr is directly opposite. This is immediately across the street. And this goes on from 7:00, 7:15 until 3:00. It's happened with the exception of snow weeks since the end of January.
It's awful.
But it's a result, let me just say, it's a result of an extreme alteration of what was to, beauty is in the eye of the beholder, but this is a beautiful natural site with lots of trees, some really nice ledge. The house that occupied the space earlier was, before demolition, was modest. You didn't see it. That's all gone.
If I could add one point that's just a little bit different from what Terry's saying, and I agree with what Terry's saying, but I have known some land of Maine and the town that that's part of, it's about the same relative area as Weston, but it's about one tenth the size. But they have an ordinance up there, which is interesting. And what the ordinance is, is in this particular case, in my opinion, this is clearly a disturbance of peace. There's just, I mean, you listen to that for a little while. I've got one at the back of my house. That's 64 decibels, 64 to 66 decibels. And that's comparatively, that's a car going 50 miles an hour and you're 50 feet away from the highway. That's the level we're talking about here. Up there, what they do is they have an ordinance that says, basically, you cannot, let me say it in a different way. You have to have, if you have an unusual either equipment or means that you're using on that site, you have to come in and regardless of any other bylaw, any other meeting, it's called the disturbance of the peace law or bylaw. And so anything that isn't covered in your laws, it allows everybody to get together and say, hey, let's come up with a plan on how to use it. And my recommendation in this particular case is there is equipment today that's available that is hydraulic, that is a marginal volume compared to what we're listening to here. This is stone age, Flintstone age stuff that belongs on the Mass Pike or Cross Wall Tham, that big, you know.
Polaroid.
Yeah, the Polaroid site. This does not belong in residential neighborhood, in no way.
We all agree that it's an intolerable disturbance, but the issue that I learned and why we're here, your former planner's suggestion, is that he and John Fields, the building inspector, both felt that there was nothing in the existing bylaw that was definitive enough to prevent this kind of activity. And so we're here to suggest to you that something needs to be put in place that will prevent this in the future.
No, I think we understood that. We understood that that was the problem and we're getting a suggestion as to one possible solution, which is the suggestion of a disturbance of the peace bylaw or something like it, which might address proposals like this so that the building inspector would have something in his arsenal to be able to deal with the kind of proposal that right now is happening by right, apparently. And if I could, I'd just like to read you a memo that I, email memo that I got from the building inspector today. This lays out where he is in the process, so I thought it would be helpful to put it into the record. He says, regarding 14 Aberdeen Road, "The developer Ken Chase, New Wampum Realty Trust, started the demo work on the existing house without a building permit. He was ordered to stop and apply. He was charged double the fee. He applied for a building permit on November 19, 2013, for a 5,995 RGFA home with extensive site work, including cutting about 14, 12 to 14 feet off the crown of the lot where the existing house was and where the proposed house was planned. It appeared that the removal of so much earth materials would require a special permit. My counts showed removal in excess of about 5,000 cubic yards. I denied the building permit. The developer redesigned the site grading plan to keep under the earth removal bylaw limits. I issued the building permit on December 16, 2013. The new redesigned site grading plan still involved cutting the crown, but only by about 6 to 10 feet. Site work started about the second week in January, mostly hydraulic excavator mounted hammering. It has continued right up until yesterday, today, actually. To date, only a small amount of cut stone has left the site. Half a dozen truckloads are about 100 cubic yards. There have been about six of butters, I count more than six in this room, that have stopped in or called to complain of constant noise. There have been no complaints of working before or after allowed times. I have a spare set of the site plan that I will leave for the planning board hearing. I think that's right here. As part of the approved approval and sign-off process, the developer will have to have a PLS or Civil PE certified, the total earth removed. Please let me know if you need anything else. I have attached the proposed grading plan, which he emailed me." So that's the building inspector's memorandum. And essentially what he's saying is that he can't, there's nothing that he can do to, within the limits of the bylaw, to prevent this from happening, which is essentially what he told you.
Right, and which is, we're recognizing that the current bylaws not prevent this condition.
Yeah, and it's, what we're finding is, we're actually finding that we're getting a number of these lots that require considerable ledge modification in order to accommodate the bigger houses that are going in.
Al, the thing is that it's not just ledge. I mean, the site has been removed, the majority of its vegetation, as you saw from the photographs, extensive alteration, what we believe is excessive alteration to the natural environment. If you're interested in Weston being a rural place, rural environment, something's not right that would have allowed this to happen without control.
This is not the first complaint that we've gotten in the last year.
But I have to say that related to it, these two things are related. The degree of alteration and the means by which the alteration is achieved are the issues. If there had have been chipping for a week, that probably would have been acceptable. If there had have been less, fewer trees removed. But there seems to be no bylaw that controls this kind of what we have done feel is excessive alteration to the natural environment.
Yeah. No, what do you guys think? I mean, it sounds like we've got, it's something that we should address.
We were contemplating the site plan disturbance bylaw. We were. And I mean, that dovetails a little bit here. Did you, were you permitted in that discussion?
No, it wasn't. I mean, there are other communities that, in Wells, the Tree Protection Act would have called for a public review and conquered the degree of change to the natural, the topography would have called for that. There, you know, I'm hopeful that when you bring on a new planner, perhaps you give the planner a charge to investigate what might be possible.
You have a charge to investigate, what might be possible?
Please put a charge.
Very welcome. This is Patsy Ware in the audience, which she's soon to be introduced here.
So, but something, again, this is the third meeting. I hear rural character constantly, so I'm really interested in maintaining rural character.
I think you have very sympathetic ears here. There are no question about it. That's a long-term fix. Because, you know, getting, you know, that, you know, a warrant on the article, your article, you know, for town meeting and that, you know, year to year, you know, it takes a while. Then you've got to make, you know, then it's got to get voted on, which means there's a lot of, you know.
Understood.
Get the public to support it.
Understood.
You know, because there's a lot of people that will come through and say, you know, don't mess with our business, you know, and we have had that situation with other things. So here you've got a sympathetic ear, there's no question about it, because we see, we're always in the, between the rock and hard place, I hate to use that term here, but it's uncomfortable. Yeah, but so that's a more of a longer-term view. In terms of a shorter-term view, I don't know that we, well, we certainly don't have that authority. The building inspector says that he doesn't. I'm somehow surprised there isn't some sort of a nuisance law or noise law.
Noise law always talks about hours of operation.
Either in the town that would help us with that, should be, or under state building code.
The purpose is defined by the zoning bylaw. It says prohibitive use. It doesn't talk about the means to the use, but it does talk about injurious, obnoxious, offensive nuisance to the community or to the neighborhood through noise, vibration, concussion. I mean, what else?
All of the, yeah.
That's all.
That's what I was like with that.
That's in the Weston bylaw.
So it stands then? So what's happening is?
Right, no one has enforced it.
Then it should be enforced.
Well, we have an opinion from the building inspector that.
It's not enforceable.
It's not enforceable, so.
But I don't think his language is correct. That's the, sorry.
Maybe, maybe the other thing we could do is have a conversation with the building inspector and see if there's not some.
Who's telling the counsel?
Yeah, I wouldn't object to that.
One thing that's clear to me is if somebody was having a party in a, you know, on that lot and made this amount of noise for this many days, you know, limited those hours in the middle of the day, the police would show up and shut it down. So there, you know, maybe there's some, like, some kind of.
Police have been called and they've been brought on site, but they have no jurisdiction. They said. I think the issue has to do with what defines nuisance. There's not, nothing very clear in the bylaw that defines the nuisance. This is clearly a nuisance.
I'll get to you in a minute, okay?
But I picked my fellow neighbors up, some comments that might want to be heard.
I had a hand up here for a second.
I'm Diana Chaplin, 26 Dublin. One of the things that's very interesting to me, I come to all the planning board meetings, and 253 Meadowbrook Road in Weston, they, when you do the jackhammering option instead of blasting, it goes on for weeks and weeks like you're experiencing, and the blasting actually takes a lot less time, but can be more impactful. And I think that it was an interesting trade-off to watch people work through those options in terms of, you know, that sort of change. So if you wanted to listen to that video, you can, you can actually listen to what people went through when they had the choice of blasting over jackhammering, which clearly the blasting group was saying, you don't want this jackhammering to happen. And you guys are all experiencing that, and you should listen to it because I think the blasters.
That's an excellent point, but the point, the issue is that the jackhammering or the blasting is a result of the plan change to the site. And I think if the plan changed to the site that's this extensive had have been reviewed or by the public, it wouldn't have happened.
Right, a couple of issues there, Diana. One of them is that much less material came out of 253 Meadowbrook than this. This is, this is taking the top of a granite hill down, six to 10 feet, which is.
By jackhammer instead of blasting.
Yeah. And so it's going on for months.
Yeah, no, it should have been a blast, it sounds like.
I want to speak, Ken Chase is the builder, Ken Chase is here in the room. I want it to be noted that he did approach neighbors and asked us if he could go ahead and blast and offered us, when we said no, because we're all, lots of us are on ledge and we are very close together in that neighborhood, some of us had basements where we couldn't, you know, determine whether or not there was damage. So I think it's important to, for, you know, for people to know that Ken did offer a choice and we made a very uninformed choice, but we know why we made it, or Tom and I know why we made it.
It's absolutely true.
But as Catherine says, it was a very uninformed choice. We had no idea of the, the decibel level and the length of time. We had no idea it would be this long.
And now people can.
I don't think, I don't think Ken did thought it would be this long, frankly. But I want to words to tell.
No, I think that's right. First, I want to say I'm humbled by the level of annoyance in the neighborhood, I have to tell you. And I am sorry about it. And in terms of looking at this project, just a couple of things. When we originally looked at this site, it's a difficult site to do a project on. It is 2.1 acres and we're currently working on about 30,000 feet of that. So there's a lot of area that, and I'm estimating, I wasn't prepared to tell you exactly how much, we're working on about a third of the site. So there's a lot of the site that's going to remain undisturbed. In terms of blasting versus hammering, I spoke personally, Mr. Highline had set up a meeting for me with a number of neighbors that I attended. I spoke with Mr. Ward and Ms. Babbitt. I spoke with some neighbors on the other side. I think there might be one a butter that I didn't speak to, and that wasn't because I didn't try, it was because I didn't get a response back. The almost unanimous feedback I got was to please hammer it. And, you know, my mistake, I couldn't have estimated how long this was going to take. I didn't expect it to take as long as it has. And one of the things that having, looking at it now, and I think as you consider a potential bylaw going forward, one thing that you might want to consider is that I think the topography has a lot to do with it. My elevation is basically 195 to 205, that's where that hammer's working. Doug, I'm sorry, I can't pronounce your last name, but you're.
Thanks, that's fine.
Your elevation down at Marion's about 160. And you go all the way past, up to North Abbot beyond to get to an elevation near ours, all the way over past Conant Road to get to an elevation near ours. So we're really at a high point. And I think a lot of the reason that this noise is so disturbing to so many people is because of that. When you look at Meadowbrook Road, what happened over there, this is actually the machine that was on that site. And I don't know of a lot of complaints from that.
It didn't last as long. It was like a couple of weeks, it's over now, I think.
Yeah. The neighbors.
As I said, I didn't realize, but, you know, I think and I appreciate that Catherine mentioned it, you know, we didn't come in with a, you know, an attitude that we're going to do it our way. We, I did go out and talk to neighbors. And as I said, I hope you all realize, I am humbled by the level of annoyance and we're hoping to be done with it within a few days. And, you know, I think that when you look at a lot like that, you know, we all have our own ideas about what that should be, but I went around and showed a lot of house designs to folks, and we're actually building the very house that I had showed people early on. It doesn't have a huge stature, it's, because it's already going to be up above the road. We tried to pick a design that would be less, I'll call it menacing to the neighborhood as it's already raised up off the road. We tried to bring in a driveway that's really going to work for that lot. I think, I hope when we're done, the folks in the neighborhood won't consider it devastating, is I think the word used, Terry, and I hope you don't feel that way when we're done. But getting back to this issue, I think that this particular lot is an extreme example, at least in my view. You folks have a lot more experience dealing with different lots in town. But I think as you consider looking at a bylaw, I think you want to make sure that the options are out there for people like myself to use in the future, because what my preference would have been to blast and be done with that in a couple of weeks. I took the feedback from the neighborhood, it's my own fault, I should have pushed harder, I should have tried to held the meeting to talk about blasting and the safety of it and, you know, some of the merits of it. And I didn't do that, and, you know, if I confront this situation again, I certainly would. So, but I really came tonight just to listen, so.
We need to do some research. I'm not sure that the choices are blasting or hammering. Maybe there's a third choice, I don't know. But both of them have negative consequences. One reason why we went through the whole exercise on 253 Meadowbrook was because the blasting, because so many houses are on ledge and along Meadowbrook, that they were, the neighbors were concerned that the blasting was going to create havoc with their houses, translate the vibrations through to their houses. So that's one of the reasons why they opted for the hammering. And so it's, it's not, it's a terrible choice for the neighbor, for all the neighbors. And this, this is what we saw in Meadowbrook, this is what we're seeing in Aberdeen, this is what, we saw this on Rolling Lane, we got a complaint on that one. And so it's, it's not that, it's not an isolated, this is not an isolated complaint that we're getting. We get this a lot.
Al, excuse me. I appreciate what Ken Chase said, but I think one of the facts here is the duration of time that this process has included. And the reason for that duration has to do with the extensive alteration to the natural landscape. And I don't expect when it's all done that the trees that we're taking down will be replaced. I don't expect that the natural vegetation will be replaced. And I don't expect that the natural stone topography will be replaced. All of which was a contributing, they were contributing factors to the rural, natural condition of Aberdeen Road that's gone.
Terry, that's really well said.
Yes, it's true.
Really well said, thank you.
It's noticeable. When you drive down Aberdeen Road, there's a big difference, big difference.
It seems to me that if it requires blasting or rock breaking, it should be done. Because it disturbs and destroys the environment. If what you're saying, Terry, about the conquered bylaw, that it's just, it doesn't happen.
Well, it happens at a much, much less degree, a small percentage.
We all live in neighborhoods where we see each other, we talk to each other, we breathe the same air, and if we're destroying all of that, Sunset Road is really under siege right now because 88 Marion is being constructed. They've probably taken down 100 trees. That's a lot of trees. So we take down the ledge, we take down the trees.
Obviously, we have a sympathetic ear.
Right.
It does depend on town meeting to make those decisions.
Then we should do something.
And do that bylaw, and that is democracy at its base. So, obviously, you're familiar with the town bylaws and the sort of, you know, the intent of that. And that intent is to minimize, you know, the disturbance of the natural state of, you know, a lot, kind of, work with it more than work against it. So rather than designing a house and then, you know, starting to, cutting the lot to fit that box, you sort of design with your stone in mind. Certainly, you know, there can be a lot more creativity in that and a lot more peace with neighborhoods with that. That's something I hope that you think about as you go forward with other projects.
I think that's a fair comment, and I take it to heart. And I've been through the site plan review process with the planning board before several years ago. I do think it's a beneficial process, but I don't think that this particular situation, you know, I think there are a set of minimum standards that want to try to meet to make a house saleable. And that's, those are the issues that we were wrestling with there. But again, in terms of disturbance, I think we're talking about less than a third of the lot. There's 353 feet of frontage on this lot. We're working on about half of that. And the total disturbance area up top is less than a third of that total lot. So, you know, in terms of when you look at the Aberdeen neighborhood, there are several of those lots that are clear cut from corner to corner. And we're going to have a significant vegetative offer, and we are going to replant as well when we get the construction going. So, you know, what, I think during construction, you all are more familiar with it, but I think during construction, it's hard to see what something's going to look like. When we get done, I think that we're going to make that lot fit in. We are going to try to save some of the natural stone facades that are there. So, you know, again, I hope that. So, you know, again, I hope that while it will have been an annoying experience for the neighborhood for sure, I hope that again, that people will see it as a beautiful lot.
Why is it beautiful?
I've got several comments. Does a comment here first?
Thank you. I just wanted to ask, have you guys, did you guys, after the blasting at 253 Meadowbrook, did any neighbors come to express concern or complaints of damage to their home?
They didn't blast. They haven't, after all. They didn't blast.
There are others that have blasted.
Okay. I thought they blasted.
That was the plan, but damages.
Oh.
That was the concern. Yes.
My question, I'm on Miriam and I back right up to the project. What's the next couple of weeks look like, or next couple of months look like? I know the jackhammering's going to stop, but do you have to remove all that stone? Or what's the, are there going to be big trucks, or what's-
But I have that big trucks, lots of them, lots.
So is that continuing, or what's the, what's the building plan and the removal of all that planned?
I'd be happy to talk to you after the meeting in however much detail you'd like. But the, in terms of what's going to happen, we've got several more days of working with the hammer. There will be some additional removal. There will also be some import of material as well. But we're going to use a lot of what's on site. And we'll be putting the foundation in and starting, you know, so many of these are the building inspector's approval. We'll be working on framing the home, so.
How many more days of the jackhammering?
I can't say for sure, but I'm hoping that it'll be less than a week at this point, but we'll see.
Question, Mary Street as well. In the building inspector's letter, it was limited to the amount of cubic feet that could be removed. Is that being measured by someone?
He, in his memo, he said that he had done calculations. I think we ought to verify the calculations. And that the site had been modified to come under the limit that would trigger the permit that would be necessary.
How do you monitor the-
Well, you take the, it's a volumetric calculation. So you take the pre-construction topography, and then you deduct what's being taken off, and that gives you cubic footage. And if they're over the threshold that requires a permit, then they have to go come to the planning board for, well, I think in that case, it's actually, there's only one who appeals for a permit.
So does that happen automatically?
It happens, it should happen. It's a matter of calculation. So presumably, you know, the building inspector said he did the calculation. He said his initial calculation showed them over the limit, but the subsequent modification of the design brought them under the limit. I don't, I have no direct knowledge right now personally of that, of any of that, so.
Excuse me, is your question who is monitoring this?
Yeah.
It's the building inspector at this point.
So the number of-
So after it's really told on, they kind of recalculate?
That's, that's right. And-
Automatically, someone triggers that?
You should be able to calculate before it's all done. I mean, it's a simple engineering step.
A lot of it is going off to the Polaroid site. A lot of it is being dumped at the Polaroid site.
He said less than, he said about 100 cubic yards came off the site. That's what he said in his memo.
It sounds like there's another 100 cubic feet to come out.
Well-
First of all, our engineer actually did a calculation of exactly how much material. And it's the way the original bylaw, I'm just giving my interpretation of it, is pretty simply, it's a net cut. So the way it reads is that the net cut on a lot of our size, I believe, is 750 cubic yards. Can't exceed 750 cubic yards. So the way our site plan is, is shown, we would not be removing, we would be removing a lot less than 750 cubic yards. That doesn't mean that necessarily less than that number leave the site. It means that after all the trucks leave the site and all the trucks come to the site with material, the net change is not more than that amount. And our engineer has certified that, by the way.
Yeah, and he wants a verification at the end of it. But it seems to me, a couple of things. The first thing is, it seems to me that this, this, based on just the number of concerns that we've heard ourselves over the last year, year and a half, that we ought to take a look at somehow addressing an issue that seems to be repeating itself. It is, my editor said, except that if it's not one bad thing after another, it's the same bad thing over and over. And this looks like one where it's happening over and over. And so we need to take a look at what we could do to plug that gap. And the other thing is, I think with the, I think we ought to have a conversation rather than just a memorandum from the building inspector and find out what the score really is. So those two things occur to me. I don't know about you. Anybody else? Any other reactions or seem like a plan, or?
I guess I'm going to ask her forgiveness for stating the obvious, but, and I'm sure everyone here understands this. I don't know that necessarily everyone who watches the video in the town understands it. But I assume that you realize that if this house were five square feet bigger, it would have had site plan review. And if it had site plan review, most of what you all are here for and complaining about, I can't say wouldn't have happened, but, or at least most of it wouldn't have happened. Some of it unfortunately would still have happened. As much as we fight against these large houses and cutting down the tops of hills and creating a landing pad for houses, there's only so much we can do about it. But certainly, everything would have been mitigated substantially. And certainly, the amount of vegetation and tree removal wouldn't have happened. And if I could just, just read a couple of things from our standards and criteria. First one being, I think, the most important, is that, and this is something we're always fighting for, the development shall be integrated into the existing terrain and surrounding landscape. Building sites shall, to the extent feasible, I'm going to skip the minimized use of weapons, preserve natural or historic features, preserve scenic views from publicly accessible locations, minimize tree vegetation and saw removal, blasting and grade changes, and screen objectionable features from neighboring properties and roadways.
What is that from?
This is from the bylaw. This is-
It's from the bylaw.
But again, we didn't have purview for this project because it was five square feet left.
But it's just five feet.
Right.
But that's, that's how people get around it. And if we were able-
Then you're going to put it down to 10 feet.
But that's, that's why, that's what we're constantly fighting for. And if we proposed a bylaw amendment that said that the minimum house had to be 5,000 square feet, then someone would build a 4,995 square foot house. There's always going to be a way around it.
It makes no sense.
Well, if it were up to us, we'd say there would be no minimum. But you're probably not going to get the town to vote for a bylaw.
But you think the town would vote for a tree protection or preservation act?
Yes.
You think the town would vote for a change in topography maximum?
Absolutely.
The town would.
Well, there's another way. That is, you know, had your street designated a scenic road. Because then the planning board reviews all replacement construction, no matter what the size is. So there is, there are some things to think for you guys.
You can go down both of those roads. They are not mutually exclusive. So what, having heard this, what is your next step?
Well, we're going to talk to the building inspector and get some more information. And I think we're going to, we were going to bring up the, the site disturbance issue this spring, actually. If the previous planner hadn't left, we were going to continue hearings. We began hearings on that last fall, and we'll continue those with the, coming on with the new planner. But we need to take a look at, trying to address this issue in the bylaw. I think we're all agreed on that.
Can the Aberdeen group write the article and bring it to the, to the, whoever cares? You don't, you folks don't have to write the article.
Well, you can write it as a citizen's petition.
Yeah.
If you want. I mean, or we're, we have to sign off. I mean, we would have to review it and agree to it and that sort of thing. But there's nothing for you, there's nothing that I know of that would prevent you from submitting a citizen's petition to us for a bylaw change, so.
Do you really want to encourage that? Don't you want to go through a planning board process of considering all of the angles in your normal hearing process?
Well, we would do that anyway.
Right, I just, it's all the unintended consequences that you all normally think about when you go through a bylaw amendment process.
Well, what we do, I mean, we've had to field a number of these. What we do is we take it and then we go through the, through that process anyway.
But a citizen's petition gets, unless they're working with you before deadlines, but once it's a petition, it stays as is and doesn't get locked. But I'm just suggesting that the better approach might be just to work with the planning board on this.
Well, I say work with them, but a lot of times people think the planning board's to stop things. And, you know, this is just to reshape how things have happened. You know, sometimes you guys look at the bad guys.
In the mind of builders, it's going to be to stop.
Yes.
Right, right.
No matter what.
Yes.
Could I just add something also? Is it possible to give John Field authority to act on interpretation of nuisance to the neighborhood through noise, vibration, concussion? Is that not possible to do?
He gives himself the authority. He's the code of health enforcement officer.
If he had that authority on day two and the experiences, we would have had it stopped.
Well-
Is it not possible?
Terry said it.
It's not that somebody comes in and announces to be able to do that. We, it's a matter of a discussion. What is his interpretation? How does he see that? And-
So I would only ask that when you talk to him, you also raise that issue.
Well, yes, that would be, that's one of the points that you've asked about. And I think that's something we should ask him. How does he feel about that particular aspect of something bylaw? And get his interpretation of it.
I think he feels powerless to do anything. But it's clear when you read this, I mean, any reasonable person, if this noise that he generated had happened in Center, those shopkeepers, that would have been stopped immediately. But because we're a residential neighborhood, our access was to him. He said, I have no authority to stop this.
That's pretty clearly the law. Yes. Could you identify yourself, please?
Oldish woman, 7th and Bradford Road. I don't live in the young neighborhood. I live on the southern north side. One thing to think about, one thing to be careful of when you want to create more laws to curtail any kind of development is the problem with Weston is that our little houses cost a million dollars when people try to sell them. And the problem is, a lot of the little houses are not worth a million dollars when people try to move into them. So when they try to move into million dollar houses, they want to take them out and build the houses that would be either resellable or livable in the million dollar land type environment. That's the problem. So what I've encountered just recently, a neighbor of mine wanted to sell his house for the same price that his neighbor sold the house three years ago, or four years ago. No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Six years ago. Since then, the construction law has been curtailed even more, I'm sorry. And he is, was very surprised that he can't sell his house for the same price. His neighbor sold it for 1-1. He can't sell it for more than 850 because nobody wants to buy it for 1-1, because nobody wants to live on that for 1-1. Nobody wants, nobody can build anything big enough to basically afford 1-1 for that house. So the problem is, when you try to sell your house afterwards, if you curtail the construction too much, the prices of our neighborhoods will drop, not for the large houses, for the small houses.
You know, I appreciate, I appreciate your concern about market value. But what I'm talking about here, excuse me, is health.
Yeah, but I-
I'm talking about health and welfare.
I understand.
I'm only talking about disturbance, nuisance.
I understand. And I think it's horrible.
I'm not talking about the market value.
No, I understand. But what I'm saying is, I think it's absolutely horrible what you have to go through. I think it's an aberration, and I think it should have been thought through better, and it should have been worked through better. But just be careful of unintended consequences. Because unintended consequences, if you look at what happened to all the scenic road values in this town, they are all much lower unless they're mansions, unless they're huge houses. If the house is huge, it's expensive. If the house is not huge, it's much cheaper than any house in a neighborhood where it's not scenic. So just be careful of unintended consequences when you do this. That's all I'm saying.
Yes.
There's a piece of property-
Could you identify yourself first?
Mark Cahill, Sherwood Circle. There's a piece of property for sale at Weston Center. Is anybody familiar with that? Give it the insurance. So what you're talking about is noise and moving ledge. That parcel becomes, has no value if it can't be developed. I'm assuming it's ledge, probably is, the whole bank is.
There are 100 things wrong with that parcel. That's one of them.
I'm just saying, so if something, so that property has no value if you can't, if you can't get the ledge out.
It has value because you can't park on it anyway, Mark. There are other issues with it.
There, I mean, it may not have value to a developer, but it may have value as part of the landscape that is the center of Weston. It may not, I mean, and we're not, and we're not, you know, we're not charged with helping, you know, someone maximize their value. There are reasons why, there's reasons, excuse me, there are reasons why some lots are called non-buildable lots. They didn't just invent them for fun.
Well, somebody thinks that that lot has some, my point is, is not whether it's developable or not. My point is that if you make it so that you can't get the ledge out of there, that particular piece of land would be undeveloped.
It's a developable.
It is a developable.
So it is undeveloped. Okay, so I made a bad comment, but somebody, there's a sign line. Somebody thinks it's worth something.
Yeah, but it's, how long has the sign been on? Eight months? Nine months? Anyway, I think we've sort of gotten to the gist of the conversation. I'll see if we can arrange a meeting with planner and the building inspector sometime in the near future, and then we'll let you know what the outcome of that is. And then we welcome suggestions, I mean, like your suggestion about, you know, disturbing the peace bylaw, of ways that we might approach the issue that you see. And just send them in to Betsy, our new town planner, and then we'll-
Bug them to the job, Betsy.
And we will, we will do our best to try and bring this into the stream of things that we're looking at for a bylaw amendment.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. I think I'm going to go by tomorrow.
It's awful. I was, when I was here a couple of days ago, it was just, just rude. Hope you do something. We will.
Do your best.
Did you get the? I showed you the pictures. Well, it's almost over. We just want to prevent it for in the future.
The idea that that.
My next.
That was a.
Exterior signs.
Of course, it was properly applied.
That was just a stuff like fabrication, but that was the intent.
They're ready, they're ready. It's us, we're the ones who are.
This is.
We actually have different bylaws.
We don't have stories.
So you don't have to go through.
Blue bylaw was a general bylaw.
They tied together, but the removal bylaws and the general bylaws, it was.
I'm sure.
If you're like, what's the C bill? They would have granted that.
Yeah.
Some people like.